The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
All right, I'm gonna open the meeting, our joint meeting for Tuesday, January 12th. First, I'd like to ask everyone who is able to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to start off our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have all members of the City Council on the dais, as well as Chairman John Smith from the Board of Finance. We have Chairman Maykowsky, Commissioner Maykowski, and Commissioner Mace in the audience. And we have Commissioners Tebow, Kelfy, and Burns and O'Brien online. So we are ready to start our meeting with a quorum. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting held on December 8th, 2020.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item is our consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any members of the joint meeting would like to pull off for further discussion? Okay. Did I hear that there was a member that would like to speak to the consent calendar? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Second. Discussion?
Consent calendar.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is to make an additional appropriation of $80,728 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund for the 2021 Comprehensive DUI Enforcement Program.
Motion to approve?
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to make an additional appropriation of $382,741 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund. Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairman. This is Ron Burns from the Finance Board. I will be abstaining from voting on this issue since my employer will be benefiting from this allocation.
Okay. So we will have an abstention from Commissioner Ron Burns, who, just as a friendly reminder, just please send the city clerk an email outlining your reasons for abstaining so that she can have it on the record as required by the ethics ordinance.
No problem.
Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And let the record show, there is one abstention from Commissioner Burns. Next item is to adopt the resolution appropriating $3.1 million for the upgrade of the Water Department SCADA system, and to waive the reading of the resolution, but to include it as part of the minutes. So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? And I do see that we have Rob Longo on the phone tonight if anybody has any questions of the Water and Sewer Superintendent. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, can we get a roll call vote on that?
That's our resolution, sure. So we're gonna start on the dais. Resolution vote requiring a voice vote.
Yes.
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 Commissioner Mace? And to those on the screen, we'll start. Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Tebow?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelfy?
I think he's muted.
Okay, he's muted.
He's muted.
Yep, let's see if we can unmute. He has to unmute himself, I think. Oh, here we go.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Okay, that resolution is approved. And the next item is also a resolution, item six, to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, notes, or other obligations in the amount of $3.1 million to finance the appropriation for the upgrade of the Water Department SCADA system, and to waive the reading of the resolution, but to include it as part of the minutes. So moved. Motion has been made and seconded. Again, a roll call vote, the way we did it the last time?
Yes.
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 Yes. And to the screen, starting, let's see, who's on? Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Tebow?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelfy?
Yes.
Did I miss anything? Okay. The resolution passes, thank you. The next item is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by Controller Diane Waldron.
Good evening, everyone. So you have the report through December 31st. Couple of things that I do want to point out. There are a couple of things that were not posted at the time that we ran the report. So if you just go along with the narrative, I think there's more information in the narrative than there is actually in the detailed report that follows. Our tax revenues are coming in very strong. I actually had a brief email conversation with the tax collector today. And even though we will be deferring the collections through April 1st, we don't see that there will be any--
You have to be very close.
Any issues with regard to cash flow or affecting the tax collection through the end of June, at this point, anyway. I mean, right now, we are at 66.2% through December, and last year, at this time, we were at 66.4%. So basically, we're still in line with where we were in the prior year. Just one thing that, and I did include again the graph, just one thing to point out in the graph that's included in my report. This is not, what I just referenced was what was budgeted, so what we're collecting versus budget. So we're at 66.2% of budget for the current levy. The numbers that are in the graph down here is just the current levy collections on the total levy, not compared to budget. So this actually is the collection rate that when we get to the end of the year, we look at these numbers, not versus the budget numbers. So just a couple of things to point out. Real estate collections, right now, we're at 63.58% in this graph. Personal property through December is at 55.4%. And then the motor vehicle regular is at 88.9%. And through even today, those numbers are even better with the January collections coming in. The one revenue that I'm not able to put in a graph, we're still working on that, is the motor vehicle supplemental billing. That, over the last few years, we've had good success in keeping our numbers relatively conservative when we budget. That, we never know where that will come in, when residents will be purchasing cars and what time of the year. But the total billing was $2.2 million compared to $1.3 that we budgeted. So we will, hopefully, if collections come in, generate a nice surplus there. Through December, though, only $44,000 was collected. So hopefully, at the next report, I'll have more info. You know, the numbers will be a little bit, will be better. Building permit revenue is coming in. Actually, we're $880,000 through the end of December. We were at $787,000. So almost $100,000 more than we were last year at this time. The one thing that I do want to point out, the conveyance fees are coming in extremely strong. Right now, we are at 100.7% of the budget. With everything going the way that it is now, I think this revenue item will exceed the budget by a few hundred thousand dollars. And I believe, and I think this information came in after this report, but we received another conveyance of $109,000 after this report was submitted. So that revenue, sign of the times, unfortunately, with COVID. This is one thing that we're doing very well in. Because investment earnings, on the other hand, are not doing as well. Our budget is at $556,000, and through the six months, we've only collected $135,000. So that's something we'll watch. We did reduce that quite a bit last year. We were working on the budget. So we'll just keep an eye on that as we go forward. I did want to just show you, the chart below actually has those three revenue items, investment earnings, conveyance fees, and the building permits. And the green bar is what we actually collected in the prior year through December. And then the red bar is year-to-date current. And then the blue bar is the budget. So you can actually see where we are compared to the prior year and to budget. So I thought that would be helpful to put that in a graph. With regard to expenditures, nothing really new to report there. We're still waiting on the final declaration on the storm. We have not received anything on that yet, but still waiting at the signature down in Washington, DC. So as soon as we have further information on that, we're hoping those costs will be reimbursed through FEMA. We did receive all of our money from FEMA. We received this $246,000, I think, last week. So that did come through. And with regard to the Coronavirus Relief Fund with the state, we did receive our $773,000. So it actually is not just an award. We actually did receive the cash. So that's all very good news. Couple of other things just to point out. We did receive the audit. Counsel, you should receive that in your boxes within the next, probably this week sometime. And the Board of Finance will get them at the next meeting. The auditors will be present at the February Board of Finance meeting. So those that are interested can attend that meeting and hear what they have to say. There will be an audit committee meeting prior to that, though. Date to be determined, but it will be before the Board of Finance meeting. The audit report was dated December 17th, so we're really happy to get that out before the Christmas holidays. And just a couple of things that when you do get the report, you know, I don't know if I mentioned this too much in prior years, but if you read anything in the audit report, read the Management's Discussion and Analysis. It starts on page four. That has a lot of good information in that. It has, you know, where we ended the year with fund balance. Fund balance, the unassigned fund balance at the end of December was 13% of budgeted expenditures at June 30th. And then the other thing that I do want to point out as well, the tax collection rate actually came in at 99.2% of the current levy. So those are just two things that I just wanted to highlight from the audit report. But if you do read anything, read the, we call it the MDNA in the CAFER. So if you can read that, it starts on page four. And it just kind of highlights everything, both on a general fund side and on a government-wide as well. And again, if anyone ever has any questions, please just reach out to me or my staff, and we'll get you the answers. And with that, if there's any questions?
Through the chair, Sister Cheryl, I have a question.
Go ahead.
My question has to do with legal fee. I noticed there was a significant December outlay of $18,000 for the Commission on Human Rights. I appreciate there might be a lot of confidentiality and confidentiality around this. But this is, is there, if you're willing, are you expecting more of the fees in this recall?
I think if the question is, why is it $18,000? Is that your question?
Yes, that's a significant amount for an investigation. Do we have a major issue? Should, are we aware that there may be other investigations or settlements that come from this?
The investigation is ongoing, so there's no information available right now. But I think that we invest heavily in the investigation so that there is not any type of financial impact to the city at the end of it.
Was this brought forward through complaint?
I'm not at liberty to discuss any of our CHRO complaints.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions for the controller? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And for those of you joining us online, you can stay on this call. The City Council meeting will begin in just a couple of minutes. And it is the same call-in for that meeting. Okay, we're going to get started with our regular monthly meeting of the January City Council meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting and ask that you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to open our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like the members of the City Council to introduce themselves, starting on my far right.
Peter Kelly, District Two. Greg Hahn, District One.
Scott Rosato, District One.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Brittany Barney, District Three.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposasou. I'd like to ask the indulgence of all the City Council members to please be very aware of your microphone, and when speaking, speak as close to it as possible so that those joining us online can hear everything that's happening in the chambers, as well as those approaching the podium and maybe using this one. So the opening ceremonies for tonight is really a moment of reflection. And with so much happening in our world, I'd like to just have a moment to think about the activities at the U.S. Capitol last Wednesday, and to think about the families who lost loved ones, as well as the insurrection that occurred and the uncertainty that so many felt. Thank you. Our second item is to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on December 8th and the special City Council meeting on December 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At public participation, we do have two special presentations tonight. We have recently changed the titles of our command staff at the Bristol Police Department. And I'd like to ask Chief Gould to come forward for this portion of our ceremony.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. How are you?
Great.
How are you? So as the mayor said, a great day for the Bristol Police Department, as you're all well aware. I came before you a while back, and I just want to thank the Police Commission, the Ordinance Committee, the Charter Revision Committee, as well as the City Council for helping us achieve this great accomplishment. This is the first time in the history of the Bristol Police Department that we will have deputy chiefs. And it's just part of our platform of moving this department forward and bringing this up to the excellence that I believe that we are striving for and getting in line with industry standards. This was something that was very important to me personally, and I believe very important to the city of Bristol. And I can't think of two greater people to be given this opportunity to be the first deputy chief of the Bristol Police Department, and hopefully forevermore to have the title of deputy chief. And what I asked to do is, once it became effective, is I wanted the privilege of pinning their new badges to them. So that's what I would like to do tonight before you.
Okay. Why don't you come up here so our viewing audience can see?
Deputy Chief Guerrero. Deputy Chief Torres. Please come forward.
The pinning ceremony. Thank you for your work. I appreciate the role you play in the administration. I can't say that enough because you're a very competent because I'm the post deputy chief of the police department. I just be the post chief. Deputy chief of the police department. And I have that as a symbol. And I lead for a little more. And if it's early, I'll just come on. For you?
Now it's time for Deputy Chief Guerrero's speech.
He's been working on that all day.
Yes, congratulations to both of you. And second, we have a guest with us from Shepherd Meadows. Shelley?
I don't look nearly as well dressed. But it is barn attire.
Okay.
So thank you so much for inviting me to speak on behalf of Shepherd Meadows Therapeutic Riding Center. My name is Shelley Whitlock-Pope, and I'm the executive director. With me is the Vice President of the Board, Larry Gonzalez. He is an attorney and longtime resident of Bristol. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of a history, a little bit of where we are and where we want to go. Last year, Shepherd Meadows celebrated 15 years of service to the community. We're located on 26 acres on the top of Hill Street, overlooking the city of Bristol. The property is free leased to us from the Episcopal Church of Connecticut. We have a 200-year-old farmhouse that serves as our offices, several outbuildings, 10 therapy horses of all different breeds and sizes, and two goats. There's a second house on March Road, which is not utilized, but we are in conversation with the church, thinking about renovating that, using that for retreats, team building, something that would incorporate the farm and the horses. Shepherd Meadows is one of six Professional Association of Therapeutic Horsemanship International Premier Centers, accredited centers in the state of Connecticut. And our instructors are also path-certified. While our history has been a therapeutic riding center, serving individuals with disabilities and special needs, we have been growing our impact. Responding to the community needs, our programs now include the therapeutic horseback riding, horsemanship. We have a veterans program, including blacksmithing, youth-at-risk, equine-assisted learning, equine-assisted psychotherapy, and able-bodied community ride. We, in response to COVID, we've added essential workers and frontline worker programs. And we've had people from Bristol Hospital coming for those visits, getting a little self-care and fresh air. So we have a vision. We're small, but we're creative, and we make things happen. We want to be a resource to the residents of Bristol and the surrounding communities. We're unique, we're non-traditional, and we're here to help people. Our tagline is "With horses, making forward strides." So if you have never visited, or it has been some time since you came to the farm, we really would like you to come and visit. Unfortunately, I left all my media materials on the desk, but somehow I'll get those to you. We're proud of the improvements that we've made in our facility over the last year, including fencing, housing, automatic waters, electricity to the products. The Neighborhood Assistance Grant with lighting, with compass that the city helped us with, is just about finished. That's enormous. And we have finished the sides on our outdoor covered arena that had been left with a roof with outside for several years. So our goal for the end of the year, and part of our strategic plan, is a new barn and equine learning center. We know that we have to do this in order to meet our community needs and our program growth. And we will be looking for help in identifying capital funding sources to help us. We do have some seed money. We've got $100,000, but we're gonna need probably three or four times that. But once it's done, it's done. And we're thinking, having some conversation. Maybe the CDBG can help us with that. So thank you so much for having me speak. Please, if you haven't been there lately, you know, we really want you to come up and see. It's not, you know, it's not something to be left off to the side in the city of Bristol. We really hope that we'll be the destination. Okay? Anything?
Shelley, you're also looking for board members, too.
We are, we are. We, the board has, in the last two years, the board, the horses, there's been a lot of change. And with that strategic plan, we are looking in particular for people to help us with the campaign, marketing, communications. Always fun to have more help with money and people that know numbers. But Larry's here, and anyone, reach out. We probably need two or three more people.
Great, well, thank you so much for updating us. It looks great up there, the horses. It's great to go up there. There's just a certain sense of serenity when you see everything that's happening up there. It's a great use of the property.
It truly is, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for coming tonight. Okay. Moving on to announcements. We all decided to talk about announcements in terms of our state of the city. It's been a difficult year for the city, but I think through all of that, there has been a lot of positives. And we thought that tonight would be a really good time to remind us of all that we learned, the resiliency issues, and the fact that 2021 has arrived. And we all believe that there is a brighter outlook for everything that we do here in the city of Bristol. So I'm going to ask our senior council member, Councilwoman Fortier, to lead off with her thoughts about the last year.
Thank you, Mayor. One of our former presidents is known for the quote, "The most terrifying words in the English language are, 'I'm from the government, and I'm here to help.'" I strongly disagree with this statement. I hope our brief overview of some highlights of this past year will help everyone see that here, in Bristol, Connecticut, the truth is, our actions and the actions of our dedicated and highly competent city employees have helped in very essential and meaningful ways during this unprecedented past year. The city responded to the COVID-19 pandemic by coordinating efforts to address the immediate needs of isolation, food insecurity, and access to food. The All Heart Hotline operated from the mayor's office, matching volunteers with residents who needed help accessing essentials. Volunteers helped the Board of Education's school lunch workers hand out thousands of school lunches when school was closed. Later, volunteers assisted the collaboration of the city and the United Way in mobile food distribution, giving out thousands of food boxes. We don't have time tonight to list all the collaboration that has occurred between the city and churches, community groups, nonprofits, and state agencies. When St. Vincent de Paul was in lockdown and was down critical staff, our generous community groups and individuals provided dinner every day for over two months. City Hall transitioned to moving as many services online as possible, and employees worked staggered shifts to preserve a healthy workforce. Two notable bright spots were our police and firefighters who conducted numerous drive-by birthday parades for city children during April and May. The pandemic is certainly the lead story for 2020, but the city had many other success stories, one of which was the amount of business activity that occurred here. Councilwoman Proleski will cover that next.
Thank you, Mary. I want to talk to you a little bit about city finances. I want you to know that I think the financial structure of our city remains solid. As you heard earlier from our comptroller, tax collections, even with the deferrals that we were allowed to do under the governor's rules, that tax collections came in strong. We continue to look for efficiencies. Later on in the meeting, you'll hear about some of the other consolidations that we've been working on for the last couple of months or several months. And we're continuing to look at reengineering, restructuring, and looking for efficiencies and saving tax dollars. We put into effect business best practices in our financial area. We're working hard, as you heard earlier about our audit, and our reserves remain consistently strong. As far as development, as we all know, the pandemic did affect us. We had a couple of projects slated for our center square that were ambitious and overall very good plans for the city. And they've been delayed because of the pandemic and the industries affected that were going to be tenants. However, there are a number of projects across the town that inspire us and will continue to increase our grant list. Most notably, the expansion of the Doubletree Restaurant, a significant expansion that's very aggressive and first-class in its development and design. On the corners of Route 6 and North Main Street-- Kind Care is, has plans to develop, I think it's 60,000-square-foot building for assisted living, also well-managed and well-designed. In addition, across town, at the Southeast Industrial Park, we have letters of intent and contracts that have been signed and others being negotiated that will significantly take the open lots that are available for sale and drop that number significantly. So, that area's been hot, and we've really worked hard to focus on development in the Southeast Industrial Park. What we've tried to focus too on is giving our professional staff in the mayor's office all the tools we can to give incentives to possible businesses who want to come to town. And we've been aggressive, but we've been smart about it. But, there's more. Small business also has thrived, or, well, it's trying to, we're focusing on small business and keeping in contact with them. With that, Councilman Kelly will give you an update.
Thank you, Dave. You're right, small businesses have really been the shining star this past year. And the majority of them are soldiering on in spite of all of the challenges faced. 16 new businesses opened during the pandemic thus far, and there are more in the hopper. From Harbor Freight, Five Below, Pure Foods, Roasted Beans, the Economic Development Team led by Justin Malley are very busy, and they've visited over 50 businesses during the pandemic. And from July 1st, 2020 to January 2021, the ECD has facilitated 15 grant awards to varied new and existing businesses, from helping manufacturers add square footage to their facilities, to guiding small startups to energize downtown. And the city worked to distribute PPEs to businesses and launched the Small Business Video Series, which is hopeful of encouraging entrepreneurs to consider Bristol. And these small businesses are critical to providing jobs and support nonprofits and schools. And the challenges to the Board of Ed and the early childhood education programs have been daunting. Kudos to Kristin Peck, who heads the Board of Education School Readiness Program. NIAAC, which is the National Association of Education of Young Children, requested to use the Bristol Board of Education digital portfolio as part of their training model. Now, this is a national entity, and that's quite an honor to request that from Bristol. The Board of Education's administration should be acknowledged for their efforts to keep students in school against great odds, knowing it is very challenging for not only teachers, but students and parents as well. I spoke to a friend of mine recently who has two high-school-age students, and they're both honor roll students, very good kids, but this is a very difficult situation. And when you hear that honor roll students are struggling, it gives you an idea of the gravity of the situation. But, the Board of Education is stepping up, and we will handle it. Now, I'd like to turn the dais over to Councilman Brittany Barney Calhoun, so you can share what you have.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly. I'm gonna share more glowing kudos about our city employees, because this year, they continued to inspire with ideas and cross-functional cooperation that led to some great wins. So, the pandemic definitely didn't put a stop to the creation of the outdoor classrooms and gardens at several Bristol schools. This collaboration between the Public Works and Schools provided a fun and engaging learning experience for our students. The project put Bristol in the spotlight and earned itself a TV special on CPTV. The Outdoor Classroom Project also helped propel Bristol as one of the few cities to achieve the Silver Certification for Sustainable State CT. This gives Bristol the edge in applying for state grants and positions us to save money on a variety of energy areas, including the city-sponsored SolarOne Initiative to help homeowners afford solar on their homes. Attaining Silver was not the only recognition we received in 2020. Bristol led the census response with a statistical 100% completion rate after the door-to-door phase was complete, which is an incredible achievement. Kudos also goes out to the Mayor's Task Force on Opioid Prevention, which received a Telly Award for its series of public service announcements. Last, I think it's important to highlight the ways in which the city has sought to be a more diverse community. The Diversity Council hosted its second annual Pride Flag Racing, and the Diversity Council, City Council, and Police Department came together for an inspiring community conversation on diversity in Rockwell Park. And just to conclude that, you know, I saw new Deputy Chiefs Tamaris and Guerrero, and I remember listening to them and seeing them take those questions at the Diversity Council meeting. At a time where there was a lot of tension, they really stepped up to the plate, including Police Chief Gould, to try to work with the community, to have difficult conversations, to be targeted with questions that were hard to answer. And they really did their best to make sure that Bristol was all heart and working towards a better tomorrow, and I'm very proud of them. So, I wanted to just shout them out a little extra tonight, too. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Board of Police, the Police, can't talk, Police Board Liaison, Councilman Scott Rosato.
Thank you, Brittany. Well, while these times have been challenging, Bristol continues to move forward, providing a quality of life that we all deserve. And so, I'm sure I not only speak for myself, but all the council members were proud to be part of what's happening, the changes, and the great things that are yet to come. During the pandemic, our city parks became essential services. They stayed open so people could get outside and kids can enjoy the playgrounds. The Mountain Bike Trail was a great addition to Rockwell Park area, and we started planning for the next phase of the pump park. Our park staff did a great job creating and updating pickleball courts for all to enjoy, especially our seniors. The park's master plan is underway, and while Page Park pulled in and opened, we can't wait for people to see it open in June. The merger of Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Community Services couldn't have happened at a better time, since there was so much work to be done helping families at this time. We continue to provide counseling services, and now, as a Board of Education childcare provider for working parents on the days the kids don't have school. On top of the pandemic, the police and fire departments had to adjust as first responders. We can't forget the George Floyd tragedy and protests that happened last spring and summer. And thanks to the community policing and involvement, thank you, Chief, we didn't see the issues that other cities did. But, it did make it very clear that the conversations about diversity, equity, and inclusion need to continue. I'd like to turn this over to Councilman Greg Han, my partner in District 1.
In a crisis, a community is only as strong as its safety net, as Mary was mentioning earlier. But, it's also about infrastructure. Our critical workforce made adjustments, but continued on with construction, drainage, water and sewer work, paving, bridge repair, and sanitary services to collect trash and recycling, all of which increased with everyone staying home. On top of that, we had the August storm to deal with. This had our maintenance crews working seven days a week to clear streets. The Energy Commission is working on projects to reduce Bristol's energy consumption and carbon footprint. They are now researching how Bristol can benefit from microgrid technology, working with state legislature to make microgrid programs work for, better for municipalities. It's on, high on our list. We have also secured an $850,000 open space grant for Shrub Road. The Arts and Culture Commission produced a mural downtown that lifted everyone's spirits, and they are working with business development and parks on other projects throughout the city. While there may not have been the usual series of concerts and festivals that Bristol loves, the city's third round of CDBG COVID funds did go to some of the city's nonprofits, like the Carousel Museum, to help them during closure and reduced hours. And now, the mayor will close up the state of the city.
Thank you, everyone. I think you all covered the wide range of departments and services that we offered. I'm just gonna take a minute to talk about the partnerships, because as many of you heard through all of the reports, what we've done over the last three years is tried to break down the barriers and silo effect of many departments and agencies. We are working together. It makes us stronger as a city to have departments working across department lines. And I think it's really important to highlight some of those partnerships. First, the Bristol Burlington Health District, which is its own district covering two communities, has been a critical player. Those employees have been working every day since March 13th and long hours. They have shifted from COVID response in a pandemic to offering significant public health response. We've had dental hygienists and our public health nurses working at Bristol Hospital during the school shutdown. They're now working in order to get vaccines out in our community. I can't say enough about them. On the inside, we've had city staff here in this building who have continued to perform their duties every day, interacting with the public at high risk, and also dealing with all of those issues that come with it. Human Resources has been busy with COVID response. We also have our IT department, our unsung heroes, who have been servicing all of us from our technological needs and the Board of Education needs for the last nine months, allowing us to pivot to so many virtual platforms, as well as providing programs virtually as well. Our parks became important, as you've already heard, but also, we had so many of our citizens more in the loss of access to the libraries and the senior center. And so, that has put it even more important, the issues of isolation amongst our population, and making sure that our staff was in contact with them through phone calls, virtual programming, email programs, and everything that we could do to retain those relationships. Most importantly, we had strong partners in our city, and that included Bristol Hospital, Community Health Center, the United Way, the Chamber of Commerce, all of the nonprofits and churches. And so, many individuals stepped up just to help their neighbors, and I think that that's very telling. Most importantly, as Councilwoman Proleski noted, we had so many things happening amongst all of these other issues. Downtown has been a hotspot for years. What are we gonna do with downtown? Well, interestingly, over the course of the last nine months, downtown was alternately hosting COVID testing, farmers-to-families food box distributions, peaceful protests, and our very important farmers markets, which were deemed essential by the governor in order to provide additional access to healthy food for people during the pandemic. All of this was a bright spot amongst the chaos, and we really enjoyed our Saturday mornings. This year, the focus is gonna be on rebuilding the infrastructure of downtown as Parcel 10 on Main breaks ground, the Webster Bank changes hands, which we've been involved with, and 10 Main Street at the corner of South and Main begins to attract tenants after being fully renovated by the Damato Corporation. And meanwhile, progress continues at the Memorial Boulevard, which will be an attraction for downtown, and we are moving forward on the Sessions Building. The COBRA program between Bristol Hospital and the Police Department have actually, hopefully, been one of the reasons why you are going to see that our opioid numbers for the calendar year 2020 were cut almost in half. Now, there's other reasons and other alternating factors there, but that's a statistic that we can be very proud of, that we'll hear more of at the February meeting. I think that it's also important to notice that we are looking to do more with these reorganizations. But, the ones that are working really well include our volunteer forces like CERT, who supported so many of our efforts during the pandemic, and the increased communication that I just see through my office between the departments that was not present when I started. The Water and Sewer Consolidation has been working fantastic, and they work very well with Parks and Public Works. And now, you see these back-and-forth emails amongst all of those division heads sharing resources during the pandemic. We have bi-weekly calls with all of our department heads under the emergency management specter for COVID, and right there, too, are so many ideas. We expedited together across seven departments, the outdoor dining piece for all of our restaurants to help them through the summer. And I'm not sure that that would have been done if we didn't have working relationships with everyone. Code enforcement continues to be a priority, and we are also going to understand that all of this has given us a better foundation to understand some of the issues that we're gonna be facing this year. They include the now-known issue about food insecurity that happens right here in Bristol. It includes the fact that the opioid public health crisis has now been identified, and we have some supports in place, but that it continues, and that sometimes people's mental health during items like a pandemic actually have adverse effects. We're also looking at some suicide statistics that are troubling for our community. We've identified the digital divide, and we've been working hard on some of our broadband initiatives in order to do more there as well. So, the housing issues, including today, where we had a very problematic and sad eviction happen that many of the departments responded to, are all signs of the times. And I think it's part of the resiliency that we've built in, that we now know that we are equipped to deal with them as they come at us. I'd like to take a minute to thank the city council, because they've been just very stalwart and very hard-working over this last nine months, and very supportive of everything that had to happen out of the mayor's office, especially covering events and doing everything that needed to be done. So, it's a strong team. I appreciate all the work. I appreciate for the employees that are here, all that you've done, knowing so much of it happens behind the scenes, that you don't get the kudos that you deserve for every day that you come to this building and do what needs to be done to preserve city services. And I look forward to, hopefully, 2021 being a very rewarding year for all of us. So, thank you. Before we move on, we did not have anyone express interest in public participation at the beginning of the meeting or sign up for it. But, I always like to pause at different parts of the meeting to see if that's changed. So, if there is anybody who would like to address the city council from a public participation standpoint, you can raise your hand and come to the podium. And if there's no one here in the building that would like to, I can then move on screen. Do we have any takers here in the council chambers? Seeing none, I will turn to those who are listening on screen. Is there anybody who is joining us remotely who would like to address the city council?
Yes, this is Jeff Cagiano, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it. 27 Cricket Hill Road, and I'm sorry that I couldn't be with you guys in person tonight. I would have hoped to have done that. I know that COVID has changed things, but I think on the positive side, I'm really appreciative that COVID now allows a platform like this so that people can get involved in local politics. And I did want to first start out and talk about politics on the national level. I know that the mayor pointed out earlier that what happened on the national level this past week is very disappointing. You know, the media and I think partisan politics has driven us into directions that are not good. And those events at the Capitol were extremely disappointing last week. Instead of proper public debate, I think we're seeing more Americans resort to violent protests over the displeasure of the way government is not working openly and transparently for them. And it's allowing the fringe elements to have a voice. It's breeding mistrust, misinformation, and conspiracy theories. So, I'm just gonna reflect a little bit on my four years on the Board of Ed, and I know some of you were involved and had the pleasure of serving with me as a liaison in other ways. And you guys have seen that I've gotten involved. I was always prepared to talk about issues. I always asked questions. I tried to understand those issues to the best of my ability, and I debated openly, without calling people names, staying focused on policy and outcomes. And I hope my colleagues will agree that even if we didn't agree on the issues, that I was professional and principled, and, you know, I think we got some things done. However, you know, I've seen a lot. Social media is a terrible thing, and so, that's why I wanted to be there live today to talk about the observations that I think many are making now, too. And I'm hoping that this is not the case, that the Bristol City Government is being looked at as a rubber stamp. And, you know, we need to ask questions, we need to get involved. And, you know, one of the things that went on social media was something that I had asked a question about, so I want to do that here live tonight. You know, the Fire Chief's resignation is obviously a sensitive issue, and this is why you go into executive session, I get that. But, over the course of two special meetings and now a regular meeting, not one appointed official or elected official is asking any questions about it, and it's, you know, being moved through the process. I get some of that. But, I believe it's appropriate to ask some questions, such as, what is the economic fallout for the taxpayers? You know, who's gonna bear that, and what does that mean? And what is the impact on the department? How is this gonna be avoided in the future? And I think there's gonna be a retirement board later this month, I realize that. But, I'd at least ask that public, that question publicly now, and I think it should I'd at least ask that question publicly now, and I think it should be addressed in public meetings. I understand that we certainly don't want to talk about HR issues. I do also have to bring up another issue that has been quite publicized on social media, and I think it should be brought out in the light of a public meeting here as well. But the City of Bristol as an employer was given access to the vaccines through the Governor's 1A distribution policy. It seems that all the employees were vaccinated, and you know, some people are going to claim that Bristol is overachieving and doing a great job, and let's get it into people's arms. Other people are going to say, other people are going to say it's wrong, and that, you know, there are people that are jumping the line. You know, I'm personally happy that it is getting into people because we need to move forward. You know, when the nation's at 30% of vaccines that are available that have been injected, it's definitely something that needs to be addressed. So I'm really looking more to the whole City Council, and I'm really glad that we're doing this after you gave the state of the city. You've all stepped up and done a lot of volunteer work and hard work to get us through COVID. But I'm curious, what waivers have been used in the past or can be used to accelerate the process for 1B? We're now in that phase where the elderly are going to want to get this vaccine as quickly as possible, and I'm sure the need for that is going to be extreme. You know, as I said, this is something that I think should be discussed in a City Council meeting or debated. I'm wondering, you know, who's involved and what's going on. So I'm just going to finish by asking kind of a rhetorical question here, too, and pointing out a fact that I have seen. And again, I appreciate the hard work that people are doing, but in my research, we have not had a no vote except for one case to question a procedural matter rather than against any type of actual policy since this board has, since this City Council has taken their seats in November of 2019. You know, I think we need to ask questions and inform citizens of what's going on for the best interest of everybody. And you know, my recommendation, quite honestly, and this is going to be a little bit harsh, and I apologize, but you know, scripted meetings are not informing the public to the greatest degree. So I do wish all of you the greatest of health. I appreciate the hard work that you're all doing, but I do want to make you realize that, you know, as a leader in the city, I hear from a lot of people that we need to have open conversations. Thank you for listening.
So there's a couple issues there. So I'm going to... Did you want to speak? Oh, okay. Let's address the... Let's see. I guess we can address the fire chief, who did not resign. He retired. I'm not going to speak to personnel issues, but I can tell you that he had a very tumultuous year, as did all of us. He had previously been a lieutenant in the department and was promoted to chief literally the week of the pandemic breaking in March of 2020. So his choice to retire is his alone. His retirement will be public at the retirement board. It is a public document, and I can tell you that as a non-bargaining employee, he did not, shall we say, max out on his retirement potential as a dollar amount. But retirement, quality of life, is important, and so we supported him. The department is fine. I have four deputy chiefs who are handling day-to-day administrative duties. I'm extremely involved as well. In fact, we had a situation today that arose, and it was handled within about 45 minutes for one of our new recruits going to the academy. So no worries on the fire department, and if you're so interested in joining us at the retirement board, that is your right to do. The second issue in terms of the vaccination, I think that we're all struggling with so many of the levels of government and how they are interacting with the supply of the vaccine, the inoculation procedures, how to get it, the various sources of it, and who's doing it. Just over the last three or four days, 1B has changed at least four times in terms of what the Vaccine Advisory Commission is going to come out with based on their meeting today at noon, based on what the federal government is saying, which is specifically on changing age groups that might be eligible, as well as the access issue. We've been dealing with that very efficiently, and I will go back to my previous comments about the Bristol Burlington Health District. They have been working tirelessly and frankly flawlessly in getting their vaccine supply out and turning it around as soon as they receive it. Part of the confusion, I think, is the fact that people don't realize that in Bristol, our first vaccine allocation came on December 23rd. We received, the vaccinators got it, that we're actually going to then be doing the vaccinations. We then went on to do Burlington's first responders on the 23rd, and then on the 24th, we vaccinated Bristol police, fire, and other first responders here in town. So all of that was done against the backdrop of the fact that all of the people who were eligible to receive it did two weeks ago. So the other thing that happened is that in terms of our eligible healthcare providers, the Health District reached out to every practice in every medical group in the City of Bristol and Burlington and assisted them in their registration. So for those of you unfamiliar with the process, it's called, the short acronym is VAMS, Vaccine Administration System. It's the required portal for the CDC. So they went through that process with everybody who is a healthcare provider and had to instruct them to access it and then get into the vaccine line. Bristol Hospital, around this time, received an extremely large dose of the vaccine and directed the Health District to send all of the healthcare providers to them so as to make sure that that vaccine supply was used. So Bristol Burlington Health District did not end up having to do the healthcare providers. That was accomplished that same week as well. Meanwhile, what we did do is we did send Bristol Burlington Health District nurses to assist Bristol Hospital with their vaccination programs. So at this point, before Christmas, a vast majority of the 1A-eligible population in Bristol was already vaccinated, and this is ahead of when other towns and cities hadn't even started their process. This is based on the relationships and the credibility that the Bristol Burlington Health District has built up with the Public Health Department, and so we are constantly getting vaccine supplies when other towns, in fact, are still waiting for some of them. Upon return from our holiday break, the Health District started scheduling additional clinics to offer vaccines to other critical government infrastructure. So what really this was is that we were already done with 1A locally, and we were moving on to 1B. That included our critical frontline infrastructure, Public Works, the water, sewer. The, one of the examples I gave while I was out over the weekend to someone who asked the question was the water main break that occurred at Bristol Hospital two Sundays ago. Can you imagine the crisis that would have occurred if we had actually had a water main break at our hospital and not had a crew ready to respond because they were either quarantined as a close contact or they were ill? So the critical infrastructure component for City Hall was always at the forefront of what we wanted to do. And yes, as you saw from Facebook posts, you did have fire and police who were not on duty during the original vaccination clinics come that day and have priority. But all of our essential workers were offered the opportunity, and we fully support that and the efforts of Bristol Burlington Health District to get as many people vaccinated as possible because that's the goal. And so that's where we started with our infrastructure. And so the other thing that has been bandied about is that we were vaccinating tennis instructors. I can wholeheartedly assure everyone that no tennis instructors were vaccinated, but if she, who is our primary tennis instructor, had asked for it, we would have given it to her because she's also 80 years old and a treasure within our tennis program. But who we did inoculate were those employees of our Parks and Rec staff who are also in our Youth and Community Services staff, who are dealing with all of our vulnerable populations, people going through evictions, the homeless, people looking for housing. It is a constant revolving door in our Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Community Services. We also partnered with the Board of Ed, and we are providing daycare for, in the setting of those working families who can't stay home for the virtual setting. They can drop their kids off to Bristol, to the Youth Services Building, and we have childcare providers helping kids with their virtual learning, similar to what was happening at the Boys and Girls Club. And I think Environmental Learning Centers also offered a classroom. So we inoculated those people that were involved with the childcare program as well. So that's kind of the story in terms of us responding with our city employees during the pandemic based on their duties and their critical functions. And yes, I think that there are a lot of different messages coming out of Department of Public Health as well as the federal government about the purity of 1A. But we always knew what our path was, and we did it early on with our first responders. We knew that the hospital had taken care of all the healthcare workers, and so we moved on with critical infrastructure. Marco has an email box full of emails from various other Health District Departments asking how Bristol did it, also emails from the Department of Public Health telling him that more is coming and asking him to also help other districts get up and running in the way that we did it. So I think that it's really important that we do continue to all work together and make sure that as many vaccines come into our community, we are the same day turning them around and putting them in people's arms because that's what our job is. So I think that that's kind of the COVID report in terms of that. And I forgot your last question about, oh, about rubber stamping?
Scripted.
Oh.
No, it really was more of a question on clarification, I think, to focus in on what you're talking about as well, is I didn't think we were in 1B yet. It sounds like you talked about some 1B people got it. Again, I'm all for getting this vaccine out more quickly, but I think my overall thing is how is the City Council going to get involved, not just you, but the entire City Council, all the other things that they were doing in the community, to make sure that there's good public service announcement about this? Because I will share with you, I have an 81-year-old father-in-law who does have comorbid conditions. You know, they, people like that are literally dying in many cases to get this vaccine, and you know, I think we need to work on the public service announcements to make sure that people know that you're out there making sure that the people in need are getting this and continue to work well in that direction. So my real last question was about 1B and how we're going to get that information out to people, and what advice can you give? You understand the VAMS system. I don't think the average Bristol citizen does.
Well, the VAMS system, the VAMS system is definitely something that we, as a City Council, have discussed as recent as this afternoon, that it is a barrier for people not only who may not have internet access, but just the actual process of signing up for something online is intimidating. We actually had members of our critical infrastructure, water, sewer, Public Works, not to call out those guys because they're all great guys, but they were struggling with what their, they don't get email on their phone, they don't remember what their password was, they were all calling their wives trying to figure out their personal emails. It was, it was a mess, and I can't imagine any of our seniors in congregate settings being able to do that, or any of our seniors, you know, in general, trying to figure out the VAMS system. So we, on our, on our weekly calls with the governor, many of the municipalities discussed that with him, and he announced yesterday that in lieu of these concerns, he is going to be adding a telephone registration system, which we are going to implement locally as well, which is going to solve probably 75% of the problems in terms of getting people into the VAMS system. So that's the first thing. The second thing is our marketing department is already working on getting the word out in terms of where to go and how to go, and that's the important part. Kurt Barwiss and I had a conversation today about what the hospital's doing, and I have some stats that I was going to share later in the agenda about where the hospital stands and what those trends are going to do. And again, from a partnership perspective, we're going to be working very closely with them on how they're going to do it to, again, eliminate confusion, reduce duplication, and again, as quickly and effectively work toward that. And tomorrow, Ray Rogazinski, our Public Works Director, Chief Gould, and Marco and I are meeting with Amy Taylor from the Community Health Centers, and we are going to be doing a walkthrough of the COVID testing site because she believes that she can also bring a COVID vaccination site to that same spot. So we will be exploring that, and if all goes well with our determination about traffic load and everything else that we need to look at, that could be possibly up and running by the end of next week. So here, in terms of the structure and the messaging, I think it's, to go back to Mary's point, we're the government and we're here to help, and the role is to get as many of these vaccines out on the street as possible. We are already ahead of schedule on 1A, fast into 1B at this point, and I think that next week we'll really start to turn the corner on a lot of that other stuff. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One thing I just wanted to add, another critical part of 1A is people in residential nursing homes and convalescent homes, and those have been done in Bristol. They were not done through the Health Department. They were done directly by the state. In other words, the Department of Public Health provided the vaccines or directed the provision of those vaccines to the nursing homes, and all the nursing home residents and staff who wanted them in Bristol have also been vaccinated as part of 1A.
And I guess the state completed nursing skilled facilities last Friday, so now the state, entire state, is covered. Does any?
And Jeff, to your question as well, I work with the VAMS as well with my professional businesses that we have. Our home care workers are deemed accessible to receive the vaccination, and you have to understand that these things change constantly. I'm getting emails on Saturdays, Sundays, every other hour of the updates. And when you call the departments, you get misguided information. So some of the people that are even working in these departments give misguided information to those individuals calling. So you have to be cautious of that as well. So sometimes what you hear may not, what you, may not be what it really, reality really is. So you know, just, just, we'll work together to get this, everyone vaccinated in a proper manner, and that's, that's what we're here for. So we do put a lot of time and effort into our city and our community and our residents. So thank you for your questions.
Is there anybody else from the online virtual audience that have any questions as part of public participation? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to our consent calendar, the quintessential rubber stamping item on our agenda. Did anybody want to pull anything off, or are we good with items A through E?
Good.
Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and accepted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And for our viewing audience, the consent calendar is one that is comprised of non-controversial items that have been vetted by other agencies or boards and are here for the convenience of moving things along on our agenda. Item six is reports and committee reports, and the first one is from the Salary Committee for the second portion of the reorganization of the Treasurers and the Controllers Departments, which we've been working on for a few months.
Thank you, Your Honor. The motion I have is very brief. It says to approve a reorganization of the Treasurers and Controllers Departments.
I'll second.
Thank you. I do want to say before we vote, because we've talked about this for several months, and there may be people on the call that haven't heard, this follows an MOU between the Treasurer and the Comptroller for supervision of the day-to-day operations of the Treasurer's Office, and the details are somewhat complicated to explain, but the Comptroller's summary is attached to today's agenda. Several positions will be eventually eliminated, and duties will be divided and some reassigned. The plan also involves cross-training of employees between these two departments for better efficiency and coverage of duties when someone is absent.
So for those of you who didn't have a chance to see the piece that was attached to the agenda, this is forecasting potential net savings of $27,000, almost $28,000 to the general fund once the reorganization is done. Two positions are eliminated, one is being added, and streamlining the efficiency and communication between those two departments. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to add that I think the department did a great job of putting this together. It was very clear about what was going to happen, and I think it makes sense from a logistical standpoint.
Any other conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have an item that we need to bring onto the agenda from the Real Estate Committee.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to bring a new item to the agenda from the Real Estate Committee regarding Lot 5 on Park Street.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to hereby move that the City of Bristol accept the condemnation amount of $11,500 from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for the city-owned property known as Lot 5 Park property known as Lot 5 Park Street. The purpose of the condemnation of Lot 5 Park Street is to allow the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation to complete the project known as Major Intersection Improvements on Route 72 at Route 69. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to sign and execute any doc, necessary documents to effectuate this transaction, and that this matter be referred to Corporation Council's office.
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Can someone just tell me exactly where Lot 5 is, because I could not find it on the map?
You couldn't find Lot 5?
I couldn't find Lot 5.
I don't have a map to show you, but we can.
Ray, where's Lot 5?
We're a map to Lot 5.
Is it by West End Pizza? Yeah, okay, then I, I know which one it is. All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
I think it's self-explanatory, the purpose of this, and I think the city and the state are looking forward to moving this along quickly.
The Route 7269 project was delayed slightly by COVID because of this acquisition piece, so hopefully we'll see some additional movement with that in the next few months. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have one more item to bring on the table from the Theater Task Forces meeting last Thursday after the council agenda was published.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to bring a new item to the agenda from the Rockwell Theater Task Force regarding a supervi, new supervisor position reporting to Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Community Services.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the creation of a new position of Arts and Culture Supervisor within Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Community Services Department be referred for consideration to the Salary Commission.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Yes, this is a position that came up when we were discussing the theater itself and the, the planning and the effort that it's going to take to make it, make it work, the theater, thriving theater. So Josh Mederos from Parks made a presentation and a proposal that we read, and it makes a lot of sense, because this position ultimately will be covered with the revenue that's generated from the theater and the events there. So it's a, it's a, it enables us to attack this problem strategically and logically and effectively. So I think this is a, a great opportunity to get off on the right foot.
Okay, so the motion is to refer this for discussion to the Salary Committee?
Yes.
It's been made and seconded, is there any other discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. So I know that it's kind of at the beginning stages now, since we're referring it to another committee for review, but do you know if this position's intended to just cover the theater, or would it be a little more broad of a stroke for other arts projects, like working in coordination with the Arts and Culture Commission? I'm just curious.
Yes, that's, that's a good question. This, this position is a supervisor position for Arts and Culture Supervisor. One of the major efforts obviously will be the opening of the theater and the planning, but also would be other programs that Arts and Culture supports, and it will report directly into Parks and Rec, so will also be working in, in that area for the programs for, for children and adults.
Great, so I appreciate that clarification, because actually throughout the whole, you know, protesting period with Black Lives Matter, I was actually connected with the Arts and Culture Director for the City of New Haven, her name is Adrienne Jefferson, and she was a phenomenal person, just on a personal level, but also professionally, delivered exceptional product to the City of New Haven in the form of just great ad campaigns for masking up and just thinking out of the box in a way that encouraged people to be safe during the pandemic, but also encouraged diversity, diversity of thought through the arts piece. So I just, that made me excited to hear that that was not just sequestered to the theater. I think that's going to be a great asset for the city if it passes all the reviews it needs, so thank you.
Initially, it's also going to include fundraising and, and, you know, a lot of the strategic planning that's involved. So it's, this person is going to be involved with the theater heavily, but there are also many things that the Arts and Culture Commission will want to work with this person on.
That's great, thank you for sharing that, Councilman Hahn.
Yes, sir.
There any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Does anybody have any other reports or committee reports to come forward at this time?
I, I do. I just want to make mention of a few things real quick.
Really?
Yes, I do. I just want some, it was basically general announcements, um, about the reminder of the winter parking ban, when it snows, please shovel your sidewalks, and Connecticut has seen an uptick in car thefts, and the main reason for these thefts were due to leaving the keys in vehicles while they're running. So please turn off vehicles when you get out, lock your car doors, hide all valuables, and park in well-lit areas. Is that good enough, Chief? All right.
And I just wanted to add that I drove by the fire department as part of a fire report, and I saw that the new garage doors are up, and it just gives a whole new aesthetic to the exterior of that building, and it just brightens up all of North Main Street. So if anybody has a chance to drive by, they're not only more functional, but they are certainly much nicer to look at since they face North Main Street, so check it out.
Thank you. So moving on to unfinished business, the first item was my COVID update, but I think I covered most of that in public participation. There is a couple of interesting stats that I'll just quickly share. Through today, Bristol Hospital has administered 3,144 vaccines, and there's an additional 1,400 that are scheduled through February, and 60% of the hospital employees have agreed to be vaccinated, and they have had 288 COVID admissions since March. So he, again, in our conversation earlier, emphasized that he's on the same path that we are, and that you want to vaccinate as many people as possible, but again, it's supply-based for the hospital as well. And then the other interesting stat that I wanted to share is the Bristol Burlington Health District also compiles flow charts so that they can track what's happening. So we've had, December has been far worse than April was, which was at the height of the cases and deaths. April was the month that stood out for all of us, and that was 355 cases in one month. But in December, we saw 1,362 cases. So that will show you how quickly things had escalated after the fall. We also have a breakdown of median age and gender for the people that have suffered death through COVID, so that is a graph that we have. And we also have some general population versus skilled nursing facility data, and we're going to put all of this on the city website so that people who like data can look at it. We also have a chart that looks at the COVID cases by week, which again is interesting, where it just really starts to ramp up on the week of September 13th and just continues to climb and climb until the week of November 29th, where it peaks at 310 cases in one week. We have seen a steady decline, and the last week for which data was reported, which was last Friday, we were down to 171 cases per week. So that's another interesting statistic. We also have breakdown by Bristol and Burlington, because we are a joint health district by gender, and we'll put all of that up on our news section so that people can peruse it at their convenience if they're so inclined.
Your Honor, could I quickly share some Board of Ed COVID stats?
Sure.
Okay, since September, there's been 125 positive COVID cases traced to students and employees of the Bristol Public Schools. And of significant note, 54% of all positive cases were reported between December and the first week of January, and specifically how these positive cases break down for December and January is 43 in December, 24 in January. Thank you.
That's a big number.
It is, it is.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else COVID-related that they'd like to bring forward? Okay, moving on, we have the discussion of the Senior Volunteer Tax Credit parameters. I wanted to bring this to everyone's attention so that you can think about it, because we typically vote on this in February. But in a conversation with our assessor, who's here tonight, Tom DiNoto, and our senior center director, Patty Thomasek, it came up in conversation that seniors have not really had the opportunity to volunteer, and we do not want them to lose the opportunity to have this $300 tax credit added to their property tax bills by virtue of not being able to volunteer. So there was some discussion about how to do this, and the recommendation that's going to come forward is that instead of doing it on a fiscal year, which means they would have needed 50 hours by June 30th to get the $300 tax credit for the senior volunteer program, Patty Thomasek is suggesting that we drop it to 25 hours of volunteer service between July 1st, 2020, and December 1st, 2021, so an additional six months at qualified nonprofits. That's what's going to come forward, but I wanted to give everybody a preview in case anybody had any feedback that they'd like to give, but also to go back to your boards and commissions and any nonprofits that you might be involved with, to really just kind of query as to whether volunteer activities are going to be ramping back up, and just so we can kind of plan. And if we don't think that they would be, we can actually do something different as well. So again, the reduction would be from 50 to 25 hours, and it would extend the period in which that would, it would apply for the fiscal year '21, '22, until December 1st, 2021. And this will be on the agenda for February for an official vote. Does anybody else have any unfinished business that they'd like to bring forward? Is there any new business?
Yes, Your Honor, I.
Closer to the microphone.
I should turn it on as well.
That helps too.
I, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Whit Betts for his help in facilitating the legislative meeting that was held here in these chambers last Monday. Many people here attended those, and Whit is always helpful, collaborative, and cooperative, and he's really, he really pulled on the bipartisan oar for Bristol, and he's really a voice of reason that's needed in this charged political climate. And one thing about Whit is he always rings the bell of common sense, and that's also needed right now as well. So thanks, thanks again to Whit for all his help.
Yep, it was a good session. We, there was a few questions. I know that the city clerk and the registrar have already forwarded their election costs that were asked for, I believe by Senator Martin asked for that, and I know that the chief and I are working on some of the police accountability impact that they've asked for as well. So one has already been emailed to them, the election costs have been emailed, and we'll get the other stuff out to them when it's available.
Your Honor, I, I'd also like to thank Chris Iogus. As a result of that roundtable, I had brought up some legislation that needed to be looked at regarding municipal grids, microgrids, and Chris followed up the next day and asked for more information, and he's following it up now. So that shows how good these, this communication can be and how effective it needs to be.
And I think the discussion was, and Mayor Merchant was participating as well from Plymouth, we decided that it would probably be helpful to have one in June as well to kind of follow up on what happened during the legislative session and what our legislative delegation was able to accomplish. So thank you for that, Councilman Kelly, I forgot about that. Any other new business? Okay, moving on, I will turn the microphone over to our city clerk for any resignations.
And Your Honor, we have two resignations, James Bernier from the Board of Police Commissioners, and Jennifer, Jennifer Arisimowicz from the City Energy Commission.
Okay. Motion to approve the resignations, place on file, and send a letter of thanks to both.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do believe the Energy Commission is planning something to honor Jen for her many years of involvement there, she was an original member.
Yep.
So we'll stay tuned for that. Both of those are losses for the City of Bristol, they're both relocating for job purposes outside of Bristol. Moving on to appointments, this is a big month, we do have a lot, so I'm going to try to move through them. The first is actually the Energy Commission, and that is to replace Jennifer Arisimowicz with Jeffrey Andrade, a Republican, resigned because of her move. It's an unexpired term to April of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next are reappointments to the Board of Fire Commissioners. The first is Anthony Benvenuto, a Democrat, and the next is Hal Kilby, a Republican, for three-year terms to January of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is to reappoint Kim Karen, a Democrat, for a three-year term to the Freedom of Information Advisory Board. That term will run to January of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next is to reappoint Patricia Philippan, a Democrat, for a five-year term to the Bristol Historic District Commission, and to appoint Michelle Crowley, a Republican, to replace Lenita Thomas as an alternate member for a five-year term to the Bristol Historic District Commission for a term that runs to January of 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next are mayor's appointments that do not require a confirming vote, and I am going to be reappointing Carolyn Chakovitz, an alternate member, three-year term to January of 2024, and to reappoint David Scarrett, alternate member, three-year term, January of 2024.
To what board, Your Honor?
Inland Wetlands Commission.
Thank you.
So moved. Second.
We don't need a confirming vote.
No, sorry.
Moving on to the Board of Library Directors, another motion to reappoint Jerry Betts, just based on how the terms fell. She filled a vacancy last month, but now it's a full three-year term for, to January of 2024, and also another three-year term for Board of Library Directors for Thomas Laporte to January 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, we do, unless we do. So the motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then Bristol Transportation Commission, we have three reappointments. The first is Frank Caputo, the second is Sean Gingery, both of those are citizen reps, and the third is City Planner Robert Flanagan. They all have three-year terms to January of 2024 for the Bristol Transportation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So for, right now, we are still looking for someone to be a citizen member for the Youth Commission. We are looking for someone to serve on the Housing Authority. I think that's all we have for vacancies right now. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the main portion of our agenda, item 11 is to award a contract 2C21-042, non-excavated sanitary sewer rehabilitation to National Water Main Cleaning Company on an as-needed basis through December 2022 for $117,700, and to authorize mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12 is the approval of consulting contract for project-based and on-call services related to the administration of the CDBG coronavirus funds for up to $25,000 with Malone &amp; McBroom, Inc., and to authorize mayor or acting mayor to sign any documents and refer to the Board of Finance for appropriation of funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? And just for clarification, this $25,000 is being held from the funds that were received from the federal government. We are allowed to put aside money for administration, and because this is now adding two additional rounds of CDBG reporting, we thought that this would be the best use of some of those administration dollars to assist staff. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the acceptance of a condemnation amount of $11,500 from the State of Connecticut.
Didn't we do this under real estate?
It was moved up under real estate.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, Jeffrey originally said that it wasn't, you didn't want to put it under real estate, so we put it on the regular agenda.
Okay. So we don't need, we don't have to take any action. So we don't need, we don't have to take any action on Agenda Item 13 because we handled it under the Real Estate Committee. Item 14 is the approval of an agreement between the City of Bristol and the New Colony Development Corporation for professional services related to 273 Riverside Avenue, which is the Sessions Building, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute. This is our pursuit of, um, the Brownfields Grant in order to fund, uh, some of the remediation for the Sessions Building.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item 15 is authorization for the mayor or acting mayor to enter into a right-of-way agreement between the City of Bristol and Bristol Solar One LLC for use of a portion of an unaccepted road known as Minor Street shown on Assessor's Map 66, subject to Corporation Counsel's review.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? So this is the skinny road that runs along the side of the building where Rich Ice Cream is. And it goes down and the solar, um, group that is going to be erecting solar panels there is going to have access there. And I believe that they are also working with our public works and lawyers to do some improvement, share the cost of improving that road. So this is going to be a win-win for, for that situation up there because right now it's gravel. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we are at the end of our agenda and we are going to have two executive sessions tonight. I'm going to ask Corporation Counsel Cliff to come forward and define who will be attending those two.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good, good evening, everyone. Uh, on, uh, item number 16 regarding a tax appeal, litigation matter of festival fun parks, uh, we're going to, uh, be joined by Attorney Tom Conlon of my office, uh, Thomas DiNoto, our assessor. Is Justin here, Mayor?
No.
Okay, so I guess he wouldn't be, and then myself. So that will be the first one. And then on the second one, um, that's a, um, um, a workers' comp, uh, matter, that'll be just Attorney Steve.
Okay, so I would like a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I would like a motion to come out of executive session.